Good evening, I'd like to call me. Roll call, Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham.
Present.
Alderman Conken.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alvin Tempest.
Present.
I'd like to entertain a motion to seat a mayor or chairman pro tem.
I'll make a motion for mayor pro tem Alderman Tempest.
Second.
Seconded by Conken. All in favor?
Aye.
Larry.
Aye.
There you go.
Keep that.
We'll go without it.
I'd like Edie to give a moment of prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Edie, would you? On stand, please.
Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us to see this day that we've never seen before and that we won't see again. I just thank you, Father God, for the opportunity to serve this city. I just ask that you would help us in our decision making this night, that you would lead and guide and direct our decision making, in the name of Jesus I pray. Amen.
With that, I'll ask you to remain standing for a brief moment of silence. Thank you.
I pledge.
Oh, excuse me. Want to say the pledge? I pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments, I don't believe we have any this evening. Audience time. Audience time. Hear me, Keith? Thank you. Sunny Gagarza, 1417 Metropolitan Avenue. Sunny?
I'll be brief to the lady, Alderman, mayor, Alderman, city council. I'm here in behalf of, oh, Domingo Sunny Gagarza, 1417. Is that on, is the mic on?
That's not on.
Can you hear me?
No.
Is it on?
It's on the left side, Sunny. Up by the left.
Mike.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, Domingo Sunny Gagarza, 1417 Metropolitan Avenue, Waukegan, Illinois. I'm here in behalf of the receivable youth group to invite the city council, the mayor, and staff, as well as the constituents in the audience, to the inauguration event tomorrow at the Puerto Rican Society from four to seven P.M. It's a youth group that is being set up by Miguel Rivera, and I'm officially here to represent him since he can't make it tonight. So you are all cordially invited to attend tomorrow from four to seven, the September twentieth, at the Puerto Rican Society. And I have some information to pass along, if you don't mind.
Of course not.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sunny. Joyce Evans?
Good evening. Last city council meeting, Alderman.
Address, Joyce.
Oh, eight twenty, Joyce Evans, eight twenty-nine, Macausus, Waukegan. The last city council meeting, Alderman Conken's, he brought it up about the children walking because most of them are not being bused in their own neighborhoods now. And I had a chance to observe, I was going up Tenth Street down Duckdale, and I noticed the bus was letting children off on Tenth Street, and they had to walk all the way to those apartment buildings down there. So you might want to maybe try to talk to the bus company because if, and reroute them because if they went down Fourteenth Street and got off, they would be right there at the apartments. But coming down there, there's no sidewalks, and it's gonna be a hazard because the snowplows aren't gonna shovel the grass. Number two is, I noticed that we, the ordinance was passed back to fifty feet, the noise ordinance, and I noticed that they have parties, and when I go to them, ask them about the party, you can hear the music about five to eight blocks away, and they tell me that they have a permit to have this. So my thing is here, is it special people get to still play theirs? They're using sound micro, sound device and what have you. So is it that some people can play it and some can't, or how is this going? Why is some people allowed, just because they got a permit, to play their music five to eight blocks away? Is there anybody who can?
We'll look, we'll have the police department look into that and zoning.
Okay, last but least, I'm here many nights because, not because I wanna be, it's because people have put trust and confidence in me. I'm doing the job that some city officials should be doing, and people of the city of Waukegan, North Chicago, and even Zion, they should be able to go to their aldermen, their city officials and what have you, to get a problem solved. But they come to me. I can't help them if the city officials here don't return my calls, don't wanna talk to me, whatever. If you don't wanna talk to me, just tell me, I'd rather, for you not calling me, take it somewhere else. Because it's really bad when you try to come to a city official, you got a real serious problem. There's a young man, I just found out who he was, and I found out there was nine guys behind my neighbor's house. And when I called the police, I found out who that one guy is, and I was told that he was told to not be in Waukegan, but he's back here. And everywhere he goes, he's got a group following him. So, and this is really serious, they're in the alleys. I, in Wa, on the south side, we use our alleys, we don't get out in the front because there's not enough park when you have the un-odd and even parking. So that throws us in our alleys. And when I come out and there's nine guys in my alley, okay, then what I'm gonna do, sit there until they finish throwing dice and smoking their weed? Okay, so we need something done with this situation, and I would appreciate it. If, like I said before, if any city officials don't wanna talk to me, just tell me, Joyce, I don't wanna talk to you. I can, I can accept it. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. Terry Harris, nine eighteen Linden?
Good evening. My name is Terry Harris, I live at nine eighteen Linden. I'm here to talk to the city council about the upcoming project at the Carters Hotel. I understand that we are contributing funds to that project. I'd like to know what have the city council did about asking Pepper Construction Company about hiring from this community. And when I say hiring, I'm not just talking about African Americans, I'm talking about people from Waukegan, local contractors. I think, I think for contractors to come in this area, to this city, and not provide work for people that are sitting at home right today, but to lose their homes is, is close to being criminal. It's our tax dollars that is being contributed there, and I haven't heard anyone, or any, anyone mention about hiring local people, carpenters, laborers, plumbers. We have, we have a lot of people here that's off, that, that belongs to the trades, and a company like Pepper is big enough to bring their own people in and leave us out. And that kinda stuff has to stop. So I would like to know what the city council plan on doing about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Ahern, twenty-three forty-eight Lewis. Did I say it right, Julie? Correct me if I'm...
Hi, my name is Julie Ahern, twenty-three forty-eight North Lewis Avenue, going to Waukegan. I'm a teacher and parent at Ander Cook Magnet School. This is Jenny Garcia, also a parent, and her beautiful daughter Gabby. And we came to speak to you night, tonight, because in these challenging times, many schools are looking for ways to get extra money and funds for schools. And last year, the community supported our school when we went after the Pepsi voting grant, and we were lucky enough to receive it, and we replaced our greenhouse roof. And this month, we have another amazing opportunity. The U.S. Cellular Company is having a daily voting contest, and the top eighteen vote-getting schools in the country will each receive fifty thousand dollars. And right now, Cook is number twenty-five, so, twenty, twenty-fifth in the country. We're the only school right now in Lake County that's in the top one hundred. So we have an opportunity here, but we dearly and desperately need your help with votes and spreading the word. All you need, show and tell, is a card with a code. You go on their site, you register, and then you vote for Cook, and after that, it's a daily vote. And every night, I vote for myself, my husband, my sisters, and sordid others. It takes literally a minute or two, and it's, it's just going to be so helpful. And we would like to offer, if anyone is willing tonight, we have plenty of cards to pass around, or if you could help us with any ideas of groups that might adopt us, that would vote for us. We're just so very, very close. And even if you register and then want us to take over your daily vote, be more than happy to. So just email me, your name and email, it's on the flyer, and that's the service we provide to you. So thank you for this opportunity, if even, just please wish us well, but this would make such a difference to the students. We have many fine arts needs, we have computers that are over ten years old, and we just could do so much with this amount of money. Thank you for the time.
Wait a minute, let me get this straight now.
Yes.
First, we're gonna go on the computer, we're gonna go to uscellular.com.
Correct.
And then we're gonna click on "Vote for Your School" button, right?
Mm-hmm.
You gotta go slow for me, so we get it, right?
That's okay, we'll take your vote.
Then you want to enter the voting code. That's a two G V Z nine K K, all in caps.
Everybody get their own code.
Everybody has their own card, everybody has their own separate code.
Yes, that's why we wanna take two tonight.
So they gotta get, they have to have one of these lifts to do it.
It's like your voter registration card, Coach.
What?
It's like your voter registration card, Coach.
Is it?
Yeah.
And then, you can put in our zip code, six zero zero eight five, which will bring down a drop-down menu for Cook, and boom.
Okay, I wanna make sure everybody knows.
Where can you get these cards?
Well, thank you, very much.
No, I'm saying if...
Thank you, Alderman.
Mayor, can I?
If you would like to get more cards, either we have a very large supply, which we're happy to give to interested parties, or if you stop at any U.S. Cellular, they also give out the cards.
Okay, Alderman Rivera?
Well, you know, they asked us how we can help. I was wondering if, if we can use our communication system, you know, with our public, I think that'll be a great idea, to use our own communication system to get this out, you know, talk, to see how we can get the message out to the rest of the community, and where they can pick up these cards, you know, their own codes.
Also, I've had people email me for codes. I'd be happy to email you a code, so you don't have to go actually pick up a card.
Yeah. Can we do that, public relations-wise?
Alderman, Ald, Mayor? I would, I would, Alderman Rivera, I think that's a good idea, I think if you try to leave an automated message on people's phone, I don't think they would understand the directions. Maybe, I mean, I know we have Dan Moran from the newspaper here, maybe they could help us out with that.
Right.
And, and do that, and may, or the school, the school has an automated system. The one thing would maybe be, I mean, kids and teachers are on computers all day. Pass these out at every school in Waukegan, and take two seconds to, to do it.
You must be eighteen years old to vote.
Eighteen years old to vote?
Yes.
That goes to school. That goes to school. Well, the teachers, for sure. Send out a mass email, we, I know we get that. I get them from Lincoln Center all the time. Give out a mass email to all the staff, that's two thousand teachers, roughly.
Okay.
I think that'd be a good idea.
Well, everyone, when they leave here this evening, make sure you grab a card, so...
I appreciate it. I just wanna reiterate that we are currently ranked in the top twenty-five in the entire United States, and the first eighteen schools all received money. So we just need votes every day until October sixth. Thank you.
We can ask Dave to do that. Good luck.
Thank you.
See you here, David here. I don't see them.
Let's get a big clap for Dan Moran. Dan, recount on you, Dan. He says yes.
Thank you very much, and good luck.
Chris Banks, four oh nine Oak Street.
Stacy Bullard. Brother Banks, four zero nine Oak Street, Waukegan, representing Black Abolition Movement for the Mine and National Action Network of Lake County. So one of the things that I wanted to address, just kinda pick up a little bit from the previous city council meeting, and I wanted to extend that to our Alderman. He said that he would be willing to work with our, our organization as for some of the issues that are going on in, in our first ward. And we are always open to work with those that are willing to work with us. But I have to make mention, Alderman, you know, I have, in spite of what we say here at the city council meeting, on a numerous occasion, I have extended an invitation to you, to our organization. You know, we've been in your ward now, yeah, yeah. I came here to the city council, and extended an invite here to the city council, to all the members. I think the only one that showed up to our grand opening, that was the, I'm trying to, Finn, Sir Newton Finn, city, uh...
Treasure.
Treasure. All right. So Mr. Finn showed up, and I do know that at one particular point, that, I remember the mayor came out to an event that we had, but I also, if you can recall, I extended a personal invite to you one day when you were standing behind our organization, talking to Robert Evans, Jr. So we have extended an invite, and if you really wanna work with us, please come out. Like I said, you gotta wait. Come to our, you know, we've been in the ward there for a first, for a whole year now. We have put at least twelve young people to work this summer, in this tough economy, and so we're doing some good things there. So if you're really genuine about working with us, please come on out. In fact, I will leave a card with you. And I also want to say to Ms. Evans, because I know the police department is stretched thin, and so the issue we was bringing up is just fair enforcement. And I don't have a problem with the police in the first ward doing their job, but I have a problem if it's an overabundance of enforcement in our ward, opposed to the rest of the city, because we have issues all over this city. And I'm gonna send it, a card to you, because I noticed you said something about people that were standing out in front of people's houses. And, and if there are people that are standing out in front of people's houses selling drugs that don't belong in our ward, I think that every call don't warrant a police involvement, I would like to see what we can do, as a community, to help police our community. So I would give a card to you, Ms. Evans, I give a card to you, and if there are people standing out selling drugs in our community, I think we should be able to do something about it collectively, opposed to, you know, the police coming every time. So I mean, if they're doing their job, that's fine. Also, I, I just wanted to say, here's one of the complaints, I wanna just read this here, it said, "An investigation," if you can recall, I had filed a complaint against an officer, where we had to go back and get one of the cards from the young man, because the officer led, the officer said that he, the reason he towed the young man's car, because I was observing him in his duty. So with respect to that, we got the young man's car back without him having to pay the five hundred dollar impoundment. And I filed a complaint on the officer, but I, I, in filing that complaint, we got the results back, which was very vague. And it says, "An investigation has been conducted into your report of misconduct on a member of this department." The investigation, and it didn't really say what department, it's, what, you know, so it's the police department. The investigation established that the conduct of the concerned employee was contrary to the rules and conduct, but we didn't file a complaint against a concerned employees, employee. We filed a complaint against Officer Mahoney, so I would really like this letter to be rewritten and to be a little bit more in detail, because I don't know if there's gonna be any real, and it says, "The rules of the regulation of the department, you may be assured that this department does not tolerate such conduct, and that appropriate disciplinary actions has been administered." Well, maybe, maybe not, but I would definitely like to make sure that we have his name in our records, so that at any point, that if Officer Mahoney have any more misconduct within our community, that the rest of the citizens would know about it. I think we have to keep a record on that. So I wanna thank you for your time and your attention, and I really eventually wanna get into some more of these issues of hypocritical and unfair enforcement of the law in this community and in this Waukegan area. So that's, that's what I'm gonna say for now, I know my three minutes is up, so before I have to get off the mic, I will be back to address some more of those issues regarding that unfair enforcement.
Stacy Bullard, twenty-eight thirty-five Belvedere Street. Did I get that right? Stacy?
Yes, sir.
First of all, you know, I just kinda wanted to piggyback on some of the words. Mr. Harris did a wonderful job explaining about the local participation, his upcoming project for the hotel. Let me tell you who I represent. Number one, represent the Black Chamber of Commerce, also the Minority Contract Association, also a former NAACP, but more importantly, a resident, a business resident of Waukegan, Integrity Developers. You know, one, one of the struggles that we have, you know, as minorities, number one, is, you know, participation. And in Waukegan, I know that through the last census, we are sixty-five percent minority, which is, I think it's forty, forty-four percent Hispanic and nineteen percent African American. But I wanna talk not just about minority participation, but also about resident. Like Terry said, I mean, I agree a hundred percent with him, as contractors, there are so many people that are local, that, you know, we have to go to Chicago or go outside our district to work, and they give us a hard time. We can't go to their town, because, you know, of course, they got the home rule, but they also have stuff that they're not gonna allow us to come there, because they're gonna make sure on contracts, that it's a certain percentage that has to go local. I am very strong about this, and I don't care what I have to do. It is so important that we get some local, some, some local participation, and I happen to know that we have some good contractors here in Waukegan, we have good contractors here in Lake County, you know, and there, there's a lot of it. You know, we make the excuse that, you know, we don't have enough of it, or they can't do it. I mean, we do have it. And, and one of the things is, not, not just in the Minority Contract Association, but we work with them every day. So I just wanted to get up here, you know, and, and just really pour my hearts out to you all and say, please, let's don't forget about the city of Waukegan. I mean, this is who you all work for, and this is who put you in office. So, you know, once again, I just ask that, I mean, this was a, this project is coming up, it could be something that we could actually put back into our community. I'm tired of contractors coming here, taking our money, and then go back home and spending it, and our tax dollars going up. I mean, it's, it's, it's not feasible. And as a businessman, I'm, I'm just really appalled at it, and I just, I, we really look at you guys as our leaders, and we're hoping that we could get some local participation here in Waukegan. And if you, if you think we don't have the contractor that can do it, you can call me, and I guarantee you, we can bid it, we could do a good job, and we can also be proud to say, you know what, a lot of this work came right, we put the money right back into our community, and they did a heck of a job, and we could do just, just as good a job in Chicago and anything else, 'cause I believe in the city of Waukegan. And I just wanted to make sure that you all believe in it, so let's make this thing happen. That's all I wanted to say.
Mr. Benning, thirty-two North Tennessee Street?
Good evening, council members, fellow citizens, and audience members. I'm here to offer thanks again tonight. As some of you know, I'm the two thousand eleven coordinator of Friends of Waukegan Beach, and we had a cleanup that was part of the Alliance of the Great Lakes Cleanup that goes on all around the, the Great Lakes in September. And we had well over a hundred members of the community come out, from Waukegan Bulldog Boosters primarily, that involved student athletes and other community members, and just citizens who, who came out and supported that. And that's, that's important. They all get the connection that forty-two million of us depend on the Great Lakes, it's twenty percent of the world's fresh water, it offers recreational opportunities, and it offers basically our life support system. So they all understand that, and I wanted to offer thanks for that. The other thing is, I'll be attending a combined conference for Lake Michigan and the Great Lakes Beach Conference in, in the next week, and hope to bring back what I learned from there, and work with the city and other stakeholders to continue to approve on our lakefront in terms of the beach and the Dunell area, and all those recreational opportunities that it offers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Jakes, nineteen forty-four Ash, is it, or forty-nine?
Mary Claire Jakes, nineteen forty-four Ash Street, Waukegan. Hello, everyone, I'm here today as board president of Waukegan Main Street. First, I wanted to thank the aldermen and the citizens who all came out to last Saturday's art walk. Another wonderful event, and it was a beautiful evening, and it was great to see all the people that came. I think David Motley estimated over a thousand people were on our streets that day, and we're very excited about the next art walk, which will be October fifteenth, where we'll also have the Paint the Town Project during the day. But of course, I'm always here to tell, invite you to something else, and next Saturday is our Main Street Fall Fundraiser, which is an Oktoberfest. It's twenty-five dollars, we're, we are having it with one of our Main Street partners, Christ Episcopal Church, and just come down, it's from six to ten, we're gonna have a polka band, and people to teach you how to polka if you don't know how to polka, and, and food, and genuine Oktoberfest huff-brow beer, and soda, for those of you who don't drink alcohol. And so we just invite you all, all the aldermen and all the citizens to come and enjoy yourselves next Saturday, six to ten, and I hope you all can come. Thank you.
That concludes the audience time. We need a motion to approve the minutes of September sixth, two thousand eleven, at a regular meeting. Motion by Alderman Beedling, seconded by Alderman Moiseo. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay? None. Motion carries. Resolutions and proclamations. Dr. Jerry Weber is gonna present from CLC on Lakeshore Campus. Doctor?
Thank you.
Wanna use the mic, Doc?
Sure. Yeah. Hand out here. Thank you, Doctor. Sure. Thank you.
Where'd he go?
Well, I wanna thank the city and the city council for this opportunity to address you. I wanna start, though, by just introducing a few people who came with me. Ted Johnson is our director of facilities, Tom Morris, Ted, would you wave or wave your ears or hand or something? Okay, and Tom Morris is there. And I especially wanna single out Rich Anderson, because he's the vice chair of our board, and he's come here to show the board's commitment and to represent the board at this meeting. And Rich is, as many of you may know, a longtime board member at the college, and has been involved in a lot of the facilities that, in fact, taking it from Quonset nuts to where we are today, really, so. I also wanted to, I, I gave you a little handout there that you could take a look at, but I, I wasn't gonna read all of that to you, but I just did wanna point out a few things to you about the project that we're planning and that we're very excited about bringing to downtown Waukegan here. The scope of that building project itself is a forty-seven million dollar project, so we think that's significant. But some of the economic impact for that will, and we've used two different estimator formulas that are typically used for economic development analyses such as this, and we're talking about three hundred construction jobs impacted, one hundred and fifteen full-time FTE equivalent in construction jobs, one point six five million in local taxes, and one point eight million state taxes generated just from the construction itself, and for fifteen million in personal income directly and indirectly paid during construction period alone. You know, the other piece I wanted to say to you was that the college is very committed to this. We're required, the state pays three-quarters of this project, Capital Development Board, we pay another quarter of it from our local funds, but there's also things that aren't quite covered on that, that we have to... quite covered on that, that we have to invest in also as part of this. And I did want to show you some of our initial investments, and when you add those up, the environmental remediation, the money we've spent on the adjacent buildings that we had to bring in so that wouldn't, so it would work with the construction project, if you tally those all up, it's about eight hundred and fifty thousand. And then if you add on, what we hope to do is a deconstruction project around that, that's another hundred and fifty thousand or a million dollars that the college is putting in itself, and that's before we have to do our match for the building, so to give you a sense of the project itself. I also have given you some figures here on some of the long-term impacts. There'll be new full-time staff at the building, we estimate at least twenty-five, three hundred new students, we estimate, and then there's the revenues brought in from that, the parking, the sales tax, et cetera, that we put down here. But I wanted to end my comments by just saying, we also think we can bring some very significant, some other significant aspects to Waukegan. One of the projects that I'm very excited about, we've been talking with the University of Illinois about, is creating a water research center there as part of that project. And I just talked to one of their administrators today and said, you know, I might say this at a public meeting today, and he said, that's great, go ahead. And so, but we've been working with them around that idea so that our students who take science courses there, who take their biology courses, could actually go into the building and watch researchers who are working on Great Lakes and Lake Michigan water research projects, so they could see that firsthand. Some of the other things that we're going to do, too, is look at what are the community needs along with this building. So as we've started to talk to people about the building, some have said it would be good to have convening space there to bring people together. So we've put that into the values that are underpinning our design for the building. That's not to say that everything survives when you go through the construction project exactly as you want it, but it is our plan to bring things into this building that would be assets to the community, such as these research capabilities and these other university partnerships that we're fostering, and then also meeting space and other things that might be of interest to the community. I want to say, just in closing, then, we don't think we're just going to secretly put this building in. I want you to know that. It's our intent to have public information about how the building will look, how it's going to fit together, and in fact, over the next month, we'll be unveiling our master facility plan for all three of our campuses, and we'll be seeking public input on those master facilities plan. And as part of that, we'll be meeting with people in Vernon Hills for, of course, our South Lake Campus and in Graves Lake for the campus there. We'll be doing the same thing right here, and we'll be meeting, and we'll be talking about what you'd like to see in that building, and we'll be talking about how that building can fit together with the existing space that we have there, really to create what we think is not just a new building, but a new campus, okay? So those are my comments. If you have any questions?
Yes, I have a comment, Doc. If I may. In this project, the local hiring ordinance is going to be in effect because it is a public works project. Am I correct, Anna? Okay.
Well, we, you know, we pay prevailing wages.
Right.
You know, it's part of our board policy, and we comply with all the regulations. Now, understand this, though. In one sense, while this is certainly our project in terms of the values in it, in terms of what the, how it moves about, what's in it, all that, it's a Capital Development Board project. So the Capital Development Board is going to determine those kind of regulations. So if they have a minority hire regulation, whatever they have, it's really a state issue on that. But we'd be glad to research how that comes in to be a part of it. We're very committed to diversity, and as all of you may know, we're very committed to working together to develop everyone within our district. You know, we just held on Sunday a convocation in which we had five hundred to six hundred students from the local area come to talk to them about the importance of college, and we brought a national speaker in there and other groups and did that at the Genesee Theater. So we're, we're very committed to developing everyone's ability to get a job, a good job. We're all about, in fact, we're all about, at the end of the day, trying to get folks a good job, really, in one sense. Either get them to the next thing they want, which might be go to a university, or else get them a good job right here.
I'm very excited about it. I know Anna's been, you know, involved with the negotiations and the architect work. You're leaning towards Leeds, a Leeds-type project?
Yeah, actually, we have a building at the Graves Lake Campus, a science building, and the, our architects were working with their leg it have told us that they will at least do gold level and strive for platinum, which is the highest level. We think that that same, that they can do, or whoever the architectural firm is, we think that they can do the same thing here.
Very well. Thank you, Doctor.
Any other questions?
How much more does this Leeds designation add to the cost of your project?
Well, you know, they used to say, and in fact, we, our board actually had that same question about a year, year and a half ago, so we, we brought a fellow from one of the units of the University of Illinois that works on sustainability and design and all that, and that researcher said to us, actually, it varies from no additional cost to about eight percent more. It all depends. And I've worked a lot on sustainability issues with colleges and on this kind of issue, and it's getting to such a point now where it's arguable if it adds any cost. Let me tell you what I mean by that. Let's say you decide you're going to go for beyond, you're going to go for platinum level. Well, to go to platinum level, you have to put something on your, you really need to get the points for platinum, you have to put something on there that's renewable energy, use a geothermal system, something along that lines. So you can say that adds cost to the building, but what we'd actually do is, we'd write for grants from different foundations and different groups, actually, the architects would do this with you, but we would write for grants to lower those costs, and then once you have those lead capabilities in the building, they actually lower your costs after that. If you're a business, you might question a seven- or eight-year payback, but if you're the College of Lake County and you know the building's going to be there seventy-five years, you know, it's worth the investment.
President Weber, I would like to thank you for definitely coming in and sharing your vision with us, but as you know, and this is something I'm just passionate about and will continue to be as long as I'm an alderman, if you could kind of expand on your process as how, you know, involving, and I selfishly say Waukegan people, but involving contractors within particularly the Lake County area, more specifically Waukegan. You said there's a board? I didn't, I'm not familiar with that process. If you can help me out with that, please?
Basically, if you build as a community college, you can do two types of projects, and Rich, help me out here if I go astray, okay? Because Rich probably knows more about this than I do, certainly. But you can either do a local project, meaning you use all local funds, okay? And then you follow whatever are your board policies and whatever local, you know, construction policies you use, or you do Capital Development Board, which is a state project, okay? So whenever you hear a university builds a building, that's a capital development project, unless they built it out of their own funds, you know, that they hadn't reserved. So the Capital Development Board, it's actually their project. They actually negotiate the architectural fees that are paid for that building with the architects, and they actually monitor the construction. Now, that doesn't mean we turn everything over to the Capital Development Board. We work with those architects on the design of the building and what it's going to be, and we determine that design of the building and the content, and then we also work quite closely in the construction to check on it, to make sure everything's right. So Ted Johnson's going to be living in that building for a while, while it's going up, at literally, at any rate. So it's a, it's a shared project between the state and us, but essentially, if you really come down to it legally, it's the state's project because it's the Capital Development Board project. Now, I can't tell you how that affects, I mean, I don't know exactly, I just don't know how that affects these local ordinances for hiring and all that, but I'm sure that we, our board would express its wish to follow all the local ordinances. I just don't know. Is that Rich, a pretty?
We always have.
Yeah, we always have. Good, as I said, Rich would know better than I, but it's been the college policy from the board to follow all those local ordinances, so.
Okay, well, I.
Mr. Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I'd like to have Ann Lynn come up and, or excuse me, Anna Finn, come up.
Sure.
And explain.
The demo, it was bid with the local higher ordinance.
Speaking of the mic.
The demolition of the building and the environmental remediation were bid with the local higher ordinance, so those will include the local higher ordinance. When the college actually builds it, that's where it's kind of their.
It's the state. That part I understood. That part I did understand, because I knew our dollars were being used for that, and I, and I do appreciate him expanding on the total process, so that he is educating not only me and everything, but others on how this whole process is going to work. I just, I do, I'm excited about this Lake Shore Campus being built in our city. Hopefully, it will bring more bodies to our downtown, but at the same time, it will add to the, you know, the beautification and our long-term vision, you know, around the college. So we commend you on such a fine effort, and I know this has been a long journey, not only for you, but for us. I just hope as we move through this process with that board, with our, with our ordinances, that you and your lawyers get with our staff and our lawyers, that we make sure, and again, this is from a passion standpoint, and hopefully it comes together on a legal standpoint, that we understand this is, yes, we're building a college, but in a sense, this is an economic improvement project, period. So I think we all have the same vision and looking at the same goal. Sometimes we just differ in different ships on getting to that, and I know, I feel this, that we will get there together and just open communication, so. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Anybody else want to speak down there? Did we miss anybody? Well, thank you, Doctor.
Just thank you again for the opportunity, and I want to just, just the last thing before I sit down is, I'm very, very happy to be a part of that and our whole master planning process. A lot of the credit goes to our board of trustees and Rich Anderson and others who've been long-term board members, who really brought this vision before I was at the college to bring the building here, and I think it's a good one, and I think we're all going to be proud of it when it's done, and we want it to have a high positive impact, and that's what we're going to do, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
With that, we. Thank you. With that, we have a presentation which Alderman Edie Newsom is going to make from Pat Jones, Waukegan Township and their board. Edie, would you like to?
Thank you, Mayor Protown. This summer, well, a couple of weeks ago, I had the pleasure of participating in the seniors, the Walk for Senior fundraiser, which is a fundraiser that the township puts on to support some of the, some of the programs that they have at Park Place, and the city of Waukegan was presented with a certificate of appreciation, and I'd like to read that. The mayor in his absence asked me to read this to the council and give it to the mayor pro town. It states, "Presented to the city of Waukegan, the continuing development of a strong city and a strong United States depends upon the encouragement of other, the mayor, aldermen, and especially of those who serve with the local police and fire departments. We thank and applaud the men and women, our first responders, for serving, protecting, and risking their lives to save others. We especially thank you for your continuous support of our Walk for Seniors, presented the tenth day of September, two thousand and eleven. Patricia Jones, Waukegan Township Supervisor, Waukegan Township Board of Trustees and Senior Citizens Services Committee." And I present this. And it was a good day. It was nice and warm outside. I believe it's approximately three and a half mile walk from Abbott Park, North Chicago, the parking lot at Abbott, to Victory Park Vista Hospital, and I'm happy to say I did it in about forty-five minutes.
We want to thank you, Edie, and we especially want to thank Waukegan Township and Pat Jones and our board. If you've never been to Park Place, I think some of you should go visit it. It's quite a facility for our senior citizens, and they really do a great, great job for our community, and sadly, not enough of us know about it. So it's something we need to do, and thank you on behalf of the city council, and we'll give that to Mayor Sabanja when he gets back.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a motion to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Waukegan and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, Local Number Twenty-eight Thirty-seven, Council Thirty-One. Second by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Rivera. If I could speak on that before, before we vote, I read this very close. That's, I got it here, boy, where am I at here? Page thirty. Page thirty. I'm concerned, here it is, page thirty on the agreement. I always like to read these. Section one, one point one. Seniority shall be the purpose of this agreement, be defined as an employee's length of continuous service since the last date of hire with the city, and the rest is in a position covered by this agreement. What I am concerned about, I would like the word "in a position covered by this agreement" eliminated, and I'll tell you why. We have an employee maybe that works twelve years for the city, does his job, C-plus employee, but he does his job, goes to a management position, doesn't work out in that position, goes back to the labor force, doing his job, and now he starts all over on seniority. Now we have some cutbacks, and all of a sudden, we say, sorry, fella, you worked twelve and a half years for us, but you only got six months seniority now with the new union, you're gone. I think that's morally wrong. I really do. If he wasn't a good employee, write him up, goodbye. But if he's given you twelve years and he went up to management, and we thought he could maybe make it there, but he did cut it in the probationary period, he ought to be allowed to go back to that job with seniority, and that's why I would offer an amendment to this, to send it back to him. Seniority should be the purpose that could be defined as an employee's length of continuous service since the last date of hire with the city, period, and not put in a position covered by this agreement. I don't know how the council feels.
Coach, I agree with you on that. What happened was morally wrong. I think the problem we're in is one, this has been negotiated by the union. We can't take it part and parcel. I think we have to either hold it over or, or vote it as is. I don't think we can, you can't, as being in negotiations, as a union teacher and a union member, you can't, once something's negotiated, and it comes before a vote, you can't.
Can't do any amendments.
They already voted on it. You can't.
I'm not so sure. Number one, Alderman, if I.
Yeah, no.
You're a teacher. I'm going to make a, you go up to be a department head. Don't work out, you go back to a teacher, you still have your seniority.
But, Coach, the problem is different bargaining units, different laws, different laws, different rules for different bargaining units and different unions, that's what I'm afraid of.
Now, we have some attorneys. Don't get me started.
Me neither.
They're working, they go back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, come up with an agreement. Were you part of that agreement? No, you hired somebody to do it. Now you have the agreement. Take time to read what it says. Do you agree with it or not? If you don't agree with it, then I guess I'll vote no, you don't want amendment, send it back with the amendment, and you're going to take what they say.
No, Coach, I don't want you to miss my point. We voted on this in Labor Relations.
Right.
And there was a lot of discussion about it, and a lot of back and forth, and a lot, that point was exactly brought up, I think it was brought up by Alderman Rivera, you know, and I echoed that point, I felt. I felt that's a bad way to treat somebody. That's a bad way to treat somebody. The only problem is, again, if you want to table this or hold it over, but the problem is if we send it back, it's got to go back to, we're going right back to negotiations.
Okay.
And remember, we got, this is a good deal for both parties on this negotiation. It's a good deal.
Mayor, I have.
And I think, hold on. Is Tina here?
Tina, if she can come on up.
Or did their membership approve this already? Or do we have to approve it first?
Ratification.
I don't know if they would.
The union has ratified this agreement as currently written. Any modifications on the floor would be considered a rejection of the contract.
But the council could vote to reject it.
Sure.
Sure. Either vote yes or no. Exactly.
Tina, if the vote went to reject this, we can't put in this contract that.
Yeah, we can.
What the Alderman is talking about, about the seniority, we cannot do anything to change that, can we?
Have to go back to negotiations.
That it's part of the bargaining, is it part of that union? Is that, you know, that's their, you know?
We may want to continue this in executive session, since it is a collective bargaining issue, instead of discussing it on the floor. Or if, Mayor, you would like me to address that, I'd be happy to.
I just thought we could possibly amend that and send it back to them if they want it this way. We agree to this, but the council went to committee and they didn't think it was an important item. I think it's a very important item. I think the morale in the city is really pretty poor, and you get people who want to go up and try to better themselves and it don't work out. All of a sudden, why would I ever want to take a management job and try to help the city? Here's somebody who goes trying to help the city, all of a sudden, they go and they're not working out, and, but as a regular person under direction from a supervisor, they do a decent job. And now they lose their job because they stepped forward to try to help the city when they're in need. I believe that's morally wrong. I really do. And I could never vote for a contract with that language in it. I read this stuff. That's why after what we went through the last time with our high-priced attorneys going back and forth, telling us that part-timers will go first, then we get the crossing guards, we get the beach, and we say, "Oh, those are part-time people. They got to go." They're seasonal. No way did we ever have the intent that that was going to take place. We're talking about.
Mayor, can I make a motion to go into executive session, please? Then we should go into executive session.
You don't, no, I speak in public.
Well, then, you know, call for the question. Either you vote for it.
If you'd like to.
You know how long?
If nobody wants to second my motion.
Let me say what I have to say. You know how long, how many hours we put into this and negotiating this contract? That was part of the give and take. You know, that was part of the give and take. We've gone long enough with this negotiation.
You may have gone.
So, if you're not, if you're not for it, then call for the question.
If I don't have a second on the floor, it dies for a lack of a second. Is there a second to my motion?
Well, there are some, I would like to comment on this issue before a second, but my hand wasn't raised. Alderman Beeding's hand was raised first, so I think he had deference to Alderman Beeding.
I have a question. I'm new here. This contract that was written up, I assume this point was created by the union themselves? They put it in there, or did the city write this in there?
That particular section, 11.1, I believe, pre-exists this particular rendition of the contract. The only changes are redlined. This contract, SEIU may be older, but this is one of the older contracts at the city. It probably goes back to the 80s, I would think, early 80s. So, I'm not sure when that particular language was inserted in the contract, or if it was part of the original contract.
It can be around then.
From 20-odd years ago. But that language, at this point, when you're in negotiations, if there's existing language in the contract, both sides have to agree to change the language. One side can make the proposal, but the other side would have to concur with that proposal and agree to make that change.
So, they apparently are okay with this? They left it in the contract? If it goes down to who cares about whom, then apparently, SEIU doesn't have any qualms with taking seniority away from their own membership.
This is ask me?
Or asks me, okay. Then they apparently don't care if their members lose seniority, they go back in the work pool, and that's it. There are no seniority.
I can't really comment on their motivation for it, but the language pre-existed this rendition of the contract.
It's their call. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You know, I have two comments regarding this. One, I don't think it was never the intent, it was never the intent, and I think that's what we need to really stay focused on. It was never the intent to promote an individual, and if that individual does not work out in that particular position, that he or she loses his seniority. It was never the intent. You know, we have, we have fire chiefs who were once fire chiefs, and then, once they, whatever happened because of administrative, they come back down, they no longer fire. They don't lose their rank. It was never the intent. And I think this is where I think we're talking about. We're talking about an individual who has been a part of our organization for almost 10 or 15 years, then he or she gets to lose their position because of, that was the intent. And I think that's the spirit that we have here. Now, I said my piece on that. I think this, I'm just a little bit more disappointed. I'm more disappointed in this whole contract, because I think we need to step back all the way to the very beginning. From the very beginning, we're doing things a little bit backwards here. We made, I ain't going to say we, a decision was made to do some cuts. That's what really went down here. A decision was made to do some cuts, because those cuts were supposed to decrease this and help us with the budget that. Two years later, we need to go back on them, because that really didn't work out the way we wanted to. That's the issue I think we need to be addressing here. And I'm yet to hear why we had to, why did we make that decision? Let me tell you what I was told. I was told we made that decision because we needed to do cuts. Those cuts were necessary for the city to move forward. If we didn't do those cuts, the city is going to go broke. That's what was told to me. That's the way I'm reading all of this. So, now you're telling me that really wasn't the picture, it really should have been like this in the first place? That's where I have a major issue with. I can tell you what I was told and how I voted on the information that was given to me. Now you're telling me that information is not right? I'm confused on this whole big deal here. So, I have a lot of questions regarding this particular contract and this new settlement. This new settlement is the net result of the first bad settlement, in my opinion, because it was based on cutting the budget. Cutting the budget. That's what we was told. This is going to cut the budget and balance the budget.
Alderman, with all due respect, sir, we're getting off keel here.
No, we're not getting off keel, sir.
Yes, we are, sir.
No, I disagree with you. Call for a question. No, ain't no call for the, I'm moved to hold this over then. That's what I'm doing. I'm holding it over. You don't want to discuss it, then we talk about it another day.
Alderman, if I can, if you want to hold over, you have that privilege. However, I made a motion. If there's no second.
Second the motion, then.
Then we vote on the amendment to send it back to the union.
You got to vote.
Point of order, sir. You can't make an amendment to do the contract. It's already been ratified. You can't make an amendment to amend.
This body hasn't ratified.
No, they ratified it, and we can't make an amendment.
Negotiations.
Can I get advice from our corporation counsel, Newton Finn, please?
Start all over. We've been out of money anyway.
And if, Newton, if there's a vote, since there's a second on it, is there a certain percentage on what you need for the vote? Or it just goes straight to a holdover?
You guys, man.
In terms of the legal effect of vote to amend the agreement, I think it's a question before the council.
Correct.
As you know, I'm not a liberal lawyer. I don't handle that aspect of this legal business. As a general matter in the contract law, an acceptance in part of an offer is a counteroffer. It is not an acceptance of the deal. So, were the council to not approve the verbatim language of this particularly negotiated agreement, you would have to go right back to the bargaining process. You have to, in a sense, you're starting the process over again. I believe.
Can I make a comment, Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
I'm sorry, but we've been given every opportunity to discuss this. There have been labor relation meetings after labor relation meetings that we've invited to week after week after week. I would support calling the question. We've had every opportunity to discuss this.
Alderman Tempest?
Alderman Mozio.
We've been in negotiations with all these unions for a long time. We've tried to get these things wrapped up. We went to labor relations with this. There was a lot of discussion. Your point was well-taken. I had the same feeling. Alderman Rivera had the same thing. We hashed it out, we talked about it. At the end of the day, we said, "This is a good contract for both sides." Their union wanted it, that's what they wanted, that's what their membership wanted. They approved it by ratifying it. Now they sent it to us to ratify. If we don't ratify this tonight, it's going to go back to negotiations and start all over. And let me tell you, we got, this is a good deal for the city. This is a good deal monetarily for the city, and they ratified it. Remember, we got other unions out there ready to negotiate too. Think about that. Think about that. Your honor, Mr. Chair.
Where we at?
Mayor.
Alderman Cunningham.
Maybe we can, can we get specifically what's in this?
No.
Without jeopardizing, that's already been talked about by their union.
We need to go to an executive.
It's been ratified by a union already, right?
We need to go into an executive session.
But it's been ratified by a union.
Yes, sir.
Okay, it's been ratified by a union, it's already out there.
That's right.
Right?
Not for public knowledge, it isn't yet.
If their union has ratified it, isn't it public knowledge? If their union has already ratified it?
Both sides have.
Alderman, as you know, sir, you don't negotiate in public. I'll call, I'll call, go into an executive session. If we call for the question, then we'll go into executive session.
No, I'm not going to vote on nothing, not knowing I'm voting on now.
You had two months to look at it.
Well, it didn't take me two months to look at it. You've been working on it for two months.
We have a request by Alderman Cunningham to hold it over. A matter held over.
It's a deal breaker.
Your motion supersedes that objection. Will my motion second? Yes. Alderman Cunningham, did you second the motion?
Yes.
Amend the contract? Then we'll call the question on that, to amend the contract, to amend the contract and send it back to them. If there's a second on that motion, I'll read that again. The motion was in item number 11.1 definition, that seniority for the purposes of agreement be defined as an employee's length of continuous service since the last date of hire with the city, period, and remove the word "in a position covered by this agreement." And that is the motion to amend the agreement as presented and adopted by their union. Am I correct? We'll call the roll, please. Okay, motion by me, second by Alderman Cunningham. To amend the article of agreement on 11.1, the definition, seniority for the purposes of agreement be defined as an employee's length of continuous service since the last date of hire with the city. And what would happen? You'd send it back to them, they agree, okay.
You know.
That's if it's approved.
If it's approved. If it's not, it comes back. Start all over again.
Roll call, hold.
Start all over.
Roll call.
Alderman May.
No.
Alderman Valco.
Sir, while I applaud your thinking on this, and it was, it's the right thing to do, you don't negotiate a contract that's done already. No.
Alderman Rivera.
No, and I'm not going to be part of unfair labor practice, and that's exactly what we're doing here.
Alderman Cunningham.
Yes.
Alderman Conken.
No.
Alderman Mozio.
No.
Alderman Beeding.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Tempest. Aye. Motion fails. Seven to two. The motion before us would be to approve it as presented, and you still want to hold it over or let it go? Call the question. He withdrew his hold over. Okay. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Is this to?
To approve.
Approve.
As presented.
Thank you.
Aye. Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio.
Aye.
Alderman Beeding.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. No, as I previously stated, I think I made it quite clear, I thought that a person that worked for the city all those years should have some protection, and it's this council's duty to make sure they are protected, and I feel very strongly about that. But we did discuss it, and as far as the contract that was before us, I don't think it was before us, so therefore, I don't think it was a matter of going into the executive meeting to discuss it. That's my leave. Well, I think I'm right. Okay, where are we at? Thank you. Judiciary Committee. To award the contract for.
Who's the committee chairman?
Well, the motion, to award the contract for demolition of Alpine Demolition Corporation, for the demolition of 100 North Sharon Road in an amount not to exceed 527,000 bucks.
Point of order.
Have a motion?
If you.
Committee chair.
The committee chair can.
I'm going to ask you.
All right.
I'm ready to make the motion.
Want to read it again?
No. Can I go?
Go ahead, read it again if you'd like.
The Judiciary Committee recommends an ISO move to award a contract to Alpine Demolition Inc. for the demolition and remediation of 100 North Sharon Road in an amount not to exceed 799,000, budget code 307-130726392. The total amount of the contract is 799,000 dollars, of which the demolition costs of 527,000 dollars will be paid by the city using bond proceeds, and the remediation costs of 272,000 will be reimbursed to the city by the College of Lake County. An ISO move.
So, the actual, I have a different sheet than you have.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman May, a second by Cunningham. Second by?
Cunningham.
Sam Cunningham, to award the contract for demolition to Alpine Demolition Corporation, correct, for the demolition of 100 North Sharon Road in an amount not to exceed, did you read that?
Yeah. Coach, we're ready to vote. Ready to vote.
799? Okay, that's not what I have here.
You've got the preliminary.
You've got the preliminary. There's a final agenda. Call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.[1681.51]
Alderman Conken. Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on the agenda, Judiciary Committee recommends to award a contract to Lake County Grading for the demolition of 34 North Sherdon Road in an amount not to exceed $58,195. $58,195 budget code 246-124624438 under the Community Revitalization Program. An ISO move.
And that was, many people know it's Madison Avenue. Wanna call the roll, please? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken. Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Finance Committee.
Finance Committee met on September 12th. Item A. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council adopt a resolution deeming certain funds in the Belvedere Mall Redevelopment Special Tax Allocation Fund as surplus funds and directing the payment and distribution thereof. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman, and Newsom, second by Alderman Beedling. Call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council adopt an ordinance dissolving the Belvedere Mall Tiff District. An ISO move.
Second.
Second by Alderman Beedling. Wanna call the roll, please? Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item C. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council, the City Council adopt a resolution deeming certain funds in the Lewis Avenue Redevelopment Special Tax Allocation Fund as surplus funds and directing the payment and distribution thereof. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman. Second by Alderman. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item D. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council adopt an ordinance dissolving the Lewis Avenue Tiff District. An ISO move.
Second.
Is the ordinance already prepared?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item E. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the Finance Committee pay twice, authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Kelso Burnett Company for lift station repairs in the amount not to exceed $47,240. Budget code 555-916027691. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Beedling, to authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of contract to Kelso Burnett Company for lift station repairs in an amount not to exceed $47,240. Budget code 555-916027691. And call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item F. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract with Kelso Burnett Company for portable lift station generator in the amount not to exceed $67,780. Budget code 555-916027691. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Beedling, to authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Kelso Burnett Company for a portable lift station generator in an amount not to exceed $67,780. Budget code 555-916027691. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item G. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Suburban Concrete for the 2011-2012 sidewalk program in the amount not to exceed $116,150. Budget code 312131227620. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Beedling, to authorize the use of bond proceeds to fund the award of contracts to Suburban Concrete for the 2011-2012 sidewalk program in an amount not to exceed $116,150. Budget code 312131227620. Call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item H. The Finance Committee recommends an ISO move that the City Council authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of a contract to Alpine Demolition, Inc. for the demolition of 100 North Sherdon Road in the amount not to exceed $527,000. Budget code 307-130726392. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Beedling, to authorize use of bond proceeds to fund the award of contract to Alpine Demolition, Incorporated, for the demolition of 100 North Sherdon Road in an amount not to exceed $527,000. Budget code 307-130726392. And call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman, Alderman Newsom, I'll take these if you give you a little break.
Go ahead.
If you just read there for a while. Finance Committee, Public Works Committee, we had a special committee. We had three items. Item A. Motion to approve the minutes of the September 12th, 2011 joint meeting of the Finance and Public Works Committee. An ISO move.
Second.
Second by. Alderman Conken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B. Waive the competitive quote process due to the professional service exemption and authorize the award of a contract to Public Financial Management, Inc. for the development of a City of Waukegan Water Service Expansion Business Plan Phase 1 in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Budget code 555-916024438. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Conken, to waive the competitive quote due to the professional service exemption and authorize award of a contract to Public Finance Management for the development of City of Waukegan Water Service Expansion Business Plan Phase 1 in an amount not to exceed $75,000. Budget code 555-916024438. Call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item C. Waive the competitive quote process due to the professional service exemption and authorize the award of a contract to MWH Americas, Inc. for a water supply expansion analysis engineering study in an amount not to exceed $45,000. Budget code 555-916024435. An ISO move.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Conken, to waive the competitive quote process for the professional service exemption and authorize award of a contract to MWH America Incorporated for a water supply expansion analysis engineering in an amount not to exceed $45,000. Budget code 555-916024435. Call the roll, please. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Hi, and I'm so glad that we're doing, hold on, Mr. Clerk. I'm so glad that we're doing this. The opportunity of expanding as far as our water supply, I think it's an excellent idea. Good job, Alderman Mosio.
Thank you.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Then we had a Public Works Committee, and there's three items on that. Item A. Award the low qualified bidder to Waukegan Roofing of Waukegan, Illinois for an amount not to exceed $66,990 using bond proceeds. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Conken, to award the low qualified bidder to Waukegan Roofing of Waukegan for an amount not to exceed $66,990 using bond proceeds. Call the roll, please. Alderman May.
I'm assuming this is for the water plant?
This is the water plant due to the storm damage of the first storm.
Just wanted to verify.
Yes.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Item B. Approve the reduction of the maintenance letter of credit for J. Lawrence Developers and Centrex Plute Developers from 10% to 5% for both. An ISO move.
Motion by Alderman Mosio, second by Alderman Conken, to approve the reduction in the maintenance letter of credit for J. Lawrence Developers and Centrex Plute Developments from 10% to 5% for both. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Call the roll. Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Falco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
$124 using the CDBG program. Call the roll, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
That is it.
Economic Development, who do we have chairman of that?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Before we, you know, put the motion on the floor, I'd like to quickly, if I may, especially for the people that weren't here for the Economic Development Committee meeting, I'd like to introduce Heidi Kurtz. Heidi, if you want to come up and give a quick, a brief update on what's going on with the art space. And you're also here with Sarah Swingley. She's here from, is it Minne- Minneapolis?
From Minneapolis.
Okay, very well.
Thank you, Alderman. I will be very brief. I am here mostly to let you all know we are about to break ground, and that's very exciting.[71.59][71.59](APPLAUSE). Art space never comes to a community and makes a project work without the community bringing us here and partnering with us every step of the way, and that is what has happened to bring this project to fruition. With the help of the staff, the council, the community leaders, the individual donors, corporate donors, fundraisers, and hardworking, everyone that's been hardworking on this project, we now have all the funds we need for this project to advance it to closing and construction. I couldn't be more thrilled on behalf of Art Space to be here tonight before you. We appreciate all of your efforts to get us with this final push with the restated and slightly amended redevelopment agreement. We all had to be creative in getting us here to this point for the collective goal of getting this project under construction, creating jobs and opportunities in your community, and stabilizing a wonderful historic structure that has so much history in this community, and we're thrilled to be a part of it. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think most of the Aldermen were here for the meeting, obviously, in the last several months, you know, for a good part of it, you know, our staff. Thank you, Heidi. Appreciate it. Assisted by our consultants, Mike Higsby, I think he's here. Mike?
Mr. Higgs.
He's done a tremendous job, along with Ann Lynn, who's worked very hard in putting this redevelopment agreement together. So now, we're at this point of if there's any other questions in regards to some of the bullet points, I know we went through them, you know, during the Economic Development Committee. If anyone has any questions, any more questions, I can bring up Ann Lynn. If not, we'll call for the question. And that's, the motion will read as follow. To approve, as amended, the redevelopment agreement as presented for Art Space, Carter Lofts, and the ordinance as presented authorizing the amended redevelopment agreement. Everyone has, you know, everyone has their amended redevelopment agreement, as well as the ordinance. Again, I also want to mention Teddy Anderson and obviously Judge Waller for the work that they've done raising, you know, they're up to what, over $200,000, and that's fantastic. So, a round of applause for the efforts, for the efforts that's being made to make this happen.[250.20][250.20](APPLAUSE). You know, ladies and gentlemen, it's starting. You know, arts, along with the educational format that we're trying to do, it's working. And we got to keep this momentum going. And it all starts with our cooperation, with the community, with the businesses downtown. So this is very exciting. So again, I read the motion.
We have a motion by Alderman Rivera.
I so moved.
Second by Alderman Valco to accept the agreement as presented, right?
Amendmented agreement as presented. Alderman May.
Aye.
Wait, wait, wait a minute. We didn't call for the question. I'd like to comment if I could.
Okay.[301.13][301.13](LAUGHING).
I'd like to comment a little bit too, because in the original agreement, I voted no. And the original agreement came up with $700,000. This is quite an undertaking by the city of Waukegan. I guess I look at the building as seven months pregnant. And what are we going to do, abort it at this point? I think we're going to have to finish the project, I'm afraid so. Well, you got into me for 700,000. I've got to complete it. I mean, I can't abort it at this time. That wouldn't be a good Catholic, seven months pregnant. We can't do that. But some facts that people ought to know. And as Mr. Higsby thought, this might be quite a catalyst for the downtown to go forward. But we're going to get 36 units there.
Correct.
These units be approximately, in cost, $350,000. That's going to be a nice apartment, a beautiful apartment. And it's going to bring, for the next 20-some years, the taxes that are generated for the city of Waukegan, we're going to give back 90 percent back to the development of that property. So, the city of Waukegan is really trying to get a push to get things going, and I think with enthusiasm, with Mrs. Waller and her group promoting, and the fundraising that went on, raised $200,000, it's quite an impact. So, I will have to give my, I don't like to, but I'm forced to.[406.81][406.81](LAUGHING). Well, it's a lot of money. You got to know me. $1.1 million is over invested in this building. But it's a building that is really going to come alive, and we hope that it makes the downtown come alive. So with that, if anybody would like to comment, they may, or we'll call for the question. Anybody else would like to comment?
Call for the question.
Let's call, call for the question.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest. I'd like to see the berth. I vote aye.[444.52][444.52](APPLAUSE). And that is all, sir.
That's good analysis. Always great. Lisa knows I was going to do that. I thought that out.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, where are we at?
Old business.
Old business. Motion by Alderman Moisio, second by Alderman Newsom to adopt, as presented, resolution approving the Blanchard Road.
Dedication.
The dedication road.
Dedication roadway.
I was held over.
Held over by.
Alderman Beedling.
Alderman Beedling.
Can you help us?
Yeah, make a motion to move it forward.
Okay.
Is that the correct wording?
Okay. Do you want to explain it, Ann? Well, Moisio held it over.
No, I didn't hold it over.
Ann, please.
This is the one that's missing from. This is from Public Works, and I talked to City Engineer Ron LaVa about it, because there was some confusion. There is not a resolution. There's no document. It's just a motion to authorize the proper city officials to sign the plat of dedication for Blanchard Road, which is part of the, I think it's called HSA subdivision, if I'm not mistaken. It's a previously approved subdivision. As part of that process, they're dedicating back a part of Blanchard Road that's not under our jurisdiction, because we have water sewer everything else. And so, we just, it's just a motion to authorize proper city officials to sign the plat of dedication. That is all. There's no resolution.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, will you repeat the motion so we get it?
Yes, the motion is to authorize the proper city officials to sign the plat of dedication for Blanchard Road.
Motion by Alderman.
Let Beedling herald.
Beedling, second by Alderman.
Whoever.
Me?
Absolutely.
Let's go.
Okay, call the roll, please. Alderman May. Thank you, Ann.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Approve of bills dated September 8, 2011, amount of $1,272,033.28. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Conken. Call the roll, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Approve of bills dated September 19, 2011, amount of $1,384,092.2. Motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Conken. And call the roll, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Approve of block parties.
So moved.
Approve the block parties as presented, motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Rivera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approved treasurer's report for August 2011, move that the treasurer report received and placed and filed by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman May. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Authorize Waukegan High School to hold their homecoming bonfire on the beach on September 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we got to give that to Alderman May, and second by Alderman Valco. Well, Moisio? Yeah, Moisio better do it.
Thank God it's down there. What an improvement.[681.11][681.11](LAUGHING). What an improvement from McCary Field. You did it last year, zero trouble last year.
Yeah.
McCary Field, you need the National Guard, but so moved.[692.13][692.13](LAUGHING).
So we got, again, a motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Moisio to authorize Waukegan High School to hold their homecoming bonfire on the beach on September 21st from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay, anybody? No? Okay, motion carries. Where are we at? Ordinance resolutions. Approve the conditional use permit for demolition recycle establishment at 3051 West Apple Avenue, zoning calendar number 2352.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by.
Second.
Alderman, second May. Call the roll, please.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman Time, Alderman May.
First off, I want to say congratulations to the Art Space fundraising team. You guys did a fantastic job, and I'm glad to see you all out at the meeting tonight. So congratulations, and congratulations to Waukegan. I also want to congrats to the Art Walk team. This past weekend was unbelievably a successful event. My next item, I want to continue to encourage folks in my ward to start up the Neighborhood Watch groups. We read in the paper this week, Lindenhurst, Antioch, Libertyville. This isn't a Waukegan issue, it's more of like an economic issue. There's burglaries happening all over the county. I really would like to encourage any resident to call me to start a Neighborhood Watch group. We do have a dedicated police officer, and he's doing a great job with that program. Next item, message to Waukegan, specifically my ward, that they will be conducting, Public Works will be conducting the leaf program again this year. So you will have curbside leaf pickup, but it hasn't started yet. Okay? Not until late October. We'll make an announcement. I know those maples are falling all over our neighborhoods. You got to bag them. We haven't started the leaf pickup program yet. Don't put your leaves on the curb unless they're in a bag or a proper receptacle. We'll let you know when the leaf program does start up. And finally, regarding Paint the Town, I encourage everyone to go to www.litefm.com, L-I-T-E-F-M dot com. And you can fill out a quick little form there and volunteer to paint the town with Waukegan on October 15th. They have all kinds of two- and three-hour commitments available. I really would like to see everyone out there. Get your soccer team, get your religious group. Let's get everyone out there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Valco?
A couple of thank yous, everybody else left, Mr. Binning. Always thank you, sir. You're up here all the time volunteering. The rest of the people left, but Mike, thank you very much, sir. Tell Ian thank you, and Ann Lynn also thank you, and obviously Noel too, for all your hard work. Thanks, guys. That's all I have.
That's it? Alderman Rivera?
Thank you. First of all, I, you know, I had a Neighborhood Watch meeting in my ward too, there on Catalpa. And we've had a brash of unfortunate, you know, burglaries and scams, you know, that are affecting the elderly. So we called one of my captains over there, Rosie, and we had it over at, and I want to thank the host of their home, Ms. Nitsa Rivera and her husband, for having all these people. We had, we actually had about 60 people in this yard. So people are very concerned. They were there. They expressed their, any situations that they had. I had them tell their story. And basically, there was about five or six stories, but these stories had the same MO. You know, it involved their windows, you know, better security on the windows, their doors, you know, better security on their doors, improper lighting, leaving their garages open. You know, we discussed all of these things. And then I had Officer, I want to thank Officer Dan Van Huguen and our chief great house for having Officer Van Huguen, who's, who covers my area, who really came in there to discuss the scams, you know, with the elderly. So, so it was a very good meeting, very good meeting. Again, the Hispanic parade yesterday, it was a beautiful parade. I want to give kudos to Porfirio Garcia, myself, and Alderman Cunningham. We were there, and it's a beautiful event, beautiful colors, a wonderful culture in the Hispanic community. It was well organized. I believe, and I truly believe, that we should, as a city, embrace this even more by including, you know, the Hispanic parade in our calendar events in the city of Waukegan. I think it's very important that we include them as well. So, it was a wonderful event, and kudos to the, to Porfirio Garcia and the event planners. They did a real good job. I also want to, I can't say enough of our staff by putting this redevelopment agreement together. Great job, everyone that was included. I want to thank the staff as far as the labor relations with ASME, the contract. You did a great job. It was a lot of work, a lot of time, months of time with this, and I'm glad we passed it. But thank you very much for all the work that everyone has done, you know, in terms of, you know, moving on. And again, once again, we're very excited with what's going on in the downtown area. You know, with the art space, I mean, it's wonderful. I was there this weekend. There were a lot of people attending. We have our, that art gallery that we have out there, it's wonderful. That is a beautiful art gallery that we have down there. And I encourage, the city of Waukegan, I encourage everyone to come down there and see what's going on. You know, we've got great restaurants down there, Jerry's Tacos, oh my God, their food is fantastic. I'm in love with their chimichangas. They're awesome. So, so anyways, yeah, you know, fongs, there's some great food down there. So please, you know, come down there, check it out. You know, it's a great place to come, and believe me, when all these things start happening, it's going to be awesome. We also, Mike Higsby, over the week, this past week, we all went and saw the projects that they have going on in downtown Libertyville, School Street, that development there. It's a beautiful development. You know, hopefully in the future, we can see that type of development in the city of Waukegan. So, you know what, there's a lot of good things happening, and hey, jump on the bandwagon. You know, we can make this, we can bring this community back to the way it is, to the way it was, and I firmly believe in it. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Rivera. Alderman Cunningham?
I too want to commend the Art Space group from Art Walk to this particular project and all those involved. It just gives me an affirmation that, once we put our minds and put our commitment to a project, and we want it to succeed, it will happen. It may take unconventional ways of doing it, it may take diverse opinion, it may even take going outside of the box, but the net result is that we get it done. And, you know, sometimes you may have an Alderman who may speak passionately about one thing, and whether it be finance, whether it be economic improvements, but the goal, I stay on the goal, is always to improve the quality of life in Waukegan. And if we have that mindset, we'll get through anything. It may ruffle some feathers, but that comes with the territory. Second, I too want to echo what Alderman Rivera was talking about, about the Latino parade. What an exceptional event, of watching the different cultures, they come out to celebrate at the meantime blending in. I saw that day, the United States flag, along with the Mexican flag, being carried by those participating in the parade. That is what America's all about. So I commend Porfirio, his team, and as we move forward to embrace that. A second, third, the police, I don't know what your technical name for it, Danny, you called it, but where you have that officer who's assigned to that specific ward, what an exceptional resource for the Alderman to have then to give back to those, to citizens to specifically deal with one particular officer. That's an outstanding idea. I know it is working big time in my ward, and I know as Alderman May had said it earlier, with the increase, increasing the, you know, the Neighborhood Watch, you know, you cannot get anything better than that. So I commend you on that, but specifically those officers who are assigned to those wards is making a difference for me, and how I communicate that to the, to the citizens of the first ward. Last but not least, I want to echo the same thing as Alderman May has. Leave, leave, leave. I'm glad to hear that we're going to continue that program, but more importantly, you need to start it when we give you the AOK. I think in the meantime, we're doing the brown bags, that's what we're doing now, the brown bags, the brown bags. BFI is still picking up the brown bags. I know Tom is not here, but they are still picking up the brown bags, correct?
Should be.
And they're picking them up on garbage day, correct? They're, I mean, you get six or seven brown bags for a buck ninety-nine. I think that's the only thing that hasn't gone up. But let's kind of be aware of that. Thank you.
Alderman Conken?
Thank you. The only comment I'd really like to make is involved, Ms. Evans, and she was talking today, and she mentioned about the school kids and where they were dropped off, and they still had a long walk without sidewalks. I have to agree with her, but the problem is, this body really doesn't have anything to do with it. I hope that anybody that sees any issues like this, with kids having to walk an exceptionally long distance from their bus stops to their homes without sidewalks, that maybe they should mention it to the school board, because they have the power to adjust the bus stops and where the bus routes are going and coming and going. Other than that, two gentlemen, Mr. Blanks and Mr. Harris, that mentioned hoping to get more contracts for the Waukegan people, and more people hired from Waukegan to fill the contract. I hope they know that this council, and especially Alderman Cunningham, are very vocal about it, and so they, their requests are not going unheeded, they are being answered. And finally, yeah, echoing Alderman May and Alderman Cunningham, the leaf program will continue, but if you rake them to, they're going to sit there, and please keep them out of the streets, even if, when we, program does start, please keep them out of the streets. We have to keep the storm sewers clean so that they don't back up and end up backing up rainwaters into people's houses. You can rake them to the curb, rake them to the parkway, but not in the street. Thank you.
Alderman Moisio?
Three things. We did three pretty important things, I think, tonight. One was the CLC getting that off of square one. That's a huge deal. If you look at the best places to live in America, they all have one thing in common. They have an educational institution somewhere in their town. Now, I'm not trying to say CLC's Duke University or University of Madison, but it's a start. It brings creative people, it brings a scholarly person down there. I think that helps. It helps us with our plan of getting people downtown. Students have to spend money, they got to eat, so that helps generate money. Two, art space, again, we've been working on that. That helps fulfill people downtown. Again, artists bring creativity. I think Art Walk has really sort of taken off, and I think it's a good thing. Again, helping us with our goal of getting people downtown. That's our goal. When people come, other things will come along with it. So I think those two things, in my nine years in the council, I think, I think they're moving. Once we start to see dirt moving, I think we'll even be, it'll be more impressive. In this economy, if people start seeing a crane, or start seeing earth move, I think that will help impress people. And the last one, the contracts for water expansion. That is huge. That's potential revenue that a casino could never touch. And one thing about water, it's recession proof. You got an oil field out there. You got an oil field out there. I'm telling the 11 communities that are out there that need water, Waukegan is in business. We are in business. This company's going to come back with a business plan. This, if we can get this done, it will tremendously help revenues. We talk about revenue streams, and we sit up here and bicker and argue about fees? My God, if we can get this done, if we can keep on point with this, if we can let the professionals do it, we won't be up here bickering about fees as much as we are. We won't be nickel and dimeing the public. Because this, we ask about a revenue stream, this is the revenue stream. So I'm going to be front and center on this. I'm going to make this happen. This is one of the reasons I ran for reelection on this term, is I'm going to make this happen. Waukegan is open for business for water. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman.[1606.13][1606.13](APPLAUSE). Alderman Beedling?
I passed.
You passed?
Yes, sir.
Okay.[1612.13][1612.13](LAUGHING). Alderman Newsom?
Okay, I'd like to echo a lot that's been said tonight, the water, the leaf pickup, all of the Aldermen. But I'd like to say congratulations to Art Space. I think it's a phenomenal project. I enjoyed going to Minneapolis to see their art space there several years ago, and I know that this will help to change the perception of Waukegan. I know we've talked for many years about the lakefront development, we're not seeing much happening, so people lose hope, or think that the Waukegan doesn't have the credibility, or we can't finish a project, we start something and we can never bring it to fruition. So I'm praying that this comes to fruition. I know that it will. Everything is in place, so congratulations, and I'm ready to see it happen. Thanks a lot for coming to the council meeting tonight and giving us the overview of what's happening. So please keep us informed. Whenever there's anything going over there, the Aldermen are allowed to come in and take a look, please let me know. I'd be happy to do so. Thank you.
I got to talk a little bit. Is that okay? You know, we're going pretty fast tonight.[1696.59] You know, we're going pretty fast tonight, we're doing good. No, a few things I want to talk, I want to talk about Neighborhood Watch too. I've stressed this for many, many years, and Lisa picked up on it too, and it's a very, very good, that and block parties. We need to stress block parties in our ward, and get to know your neighbor, because once you get to know your neighbor, you look out for each other a little more. And I see more and more of that starting to take effect in our city of Waukegan. You're getting to know your neighbor, and you look out for each other. So I think that's an important point. The other one, professional tree guys that come in and trim your trees, they're supposed to haul it away, not put it on the curb. By our statute, they're supposed, if you do a little bit of tree trimming, fine, but we would encourage you, we're paying BFI to take it anyway, so cut it in four-foot lengths, tie it up a little bit, put it in the curb, and BFI will take care of it right away. As far as leaves, especially when around Thanksgiving sometimes in the snow, you're better off putting them in a bag. They're there, they can be picked up so much easier, and it does help the city crews move on to the real heavy, heavy areas. So I would encourage you to bag them if possible, they're just a much neater job, they don't blow around, and it's taken care of. Last one, my seniority issue. Sorry to discuss it, but I think it's something that needed me to discuss. I think if I heard properly, I used to be in the Labor Relations Committee, but as honor under his wisdom, he decided it was no, rather, a valuable asset to that. But I read everything, and I really think we have to look out for our city employees, and we have to start getting the morale back. I mean, they haven't had raises for many years, they've given up a lot, they worry about losing their job. And I think our supervisors need to work on making this a, which it is, a great place to work, but help people realize, hey, you've still got a job, you're doing a great service for our community, and we appreciate what you're doing. And sometimes, rather than a raise, a thank you means a lot to people. I try to bring flowers down here once in a while as a thank you, but, yeah, that helps too a little bit. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Rivera, second by Alderman Sam Cunningham, that the Waukegan public meeting be adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posenay, motion carries. Yeah, I started.[1793.53]